All right, we're gonna call a work session order for today. And the first item on the agenda would be any comments from any board member.
I'm sorry, was that comments you said?
Yes.
A couple of things. Are we gonna talk about the evaluation of the contract today? I thought that was gonna be on the agenda today.
It's not on the agenda, but if you would like to bring up the contract, you can freely do that. Evaluation can't be discussed right now.
Okay, but it's not on the main agenda. When are we doing that? That's what I was gonna ask.
I'm sorry?
Are we just not gonna discuss the evaluation stuff? I thought it was gonna be, we talked last time, it was gonna be agenda, I thought. If it's not, that's fine, I'll just raise it now, but I-
It's not gonna be on the agenda, so if you wanna raise it now, you can.
Okay, and the evaluations won't be either? It'll just be-
Evaluations, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Bridges, is that they can't be discussed for a year from the time that it's been done?
There's a statute that talks about evaluations of employees and their releaseability at the end of the school year following the year in which they were issued.
So you guys have never discussed an evaluation of the superintendent? Or, that's perplexing.
Here, can I help?
Yes.
So yes, we do discuss it. We don't usually do it in a work session. We usually have the time, either prior to a work session or time that we designate, that we get together as a board and have our comments to our superintendent. And then that's presented at that time, am I right? Dr. Freo used to lead those.
Dr. Freo does, but we don't have individual-
Right, we don't do it in this format. It's a format where we sit with him and, right? Yeah, always remember us talking about it and adding a few comments.
Yeah, I mean, I don't even wanna talk about evaluations. I'm just trying to understand.
Figure out the process, yeah.
All right, so, okay, I guess then, in that sense, the reason I was asking this is, for one, I have a request because the December, the December 14th meeting, December 12th? 12th or 15th? I've had a work requirement added for that day. I was gonna ask if anyone would be willing to move that meeting a week to the next Tuesday. I don't know if we can do that or not. If we can't, I need to address the contract today. It doesn't have to be, it can really be any day, Thursday. From that Thursday on, I've got a two-day requirement for work. If it can't be moved, that's fine.
It's currently scheduled for the December 12th?
12th, yeah.
Right, okay, so you're saying-
Maybe the next Tuesday or that Thursday, you know?
You choose, it may be the night time.
What about the one before?
I'll be out of town the one before.
Fifth, you're out of town?
I mean, it's not written anywhere that it has to be a Tuesday, right? It can be some other day, in theory. Anyway, maybe just talk amongst yourselves, that's fine. I will go ahead and raise the contract issue now then, I guess, just to see where we stand on it. Really, sort of the same issue as last year. I think what I would recommend, I think that we should go ahead and not renew the three-year repeating contracts. Forgive me if I'm misstate, state, state this, but you know what I mean. All that does is start the clock. I mean, both Wes and Carol would still have three-year contracts in place. It just starts the clock. And I know that, in Carol's case, there was some concern about the nature of her function as an auditor, being subject to some level of compromise. If she doesn't have some kind of extra protection, I'm certainly open to discussing how we can do that. But if we stop the contract, we don't renew the contract today, all that happens is Wes and Carol have three-year deals still. And I think that's part one. I think secondly, it probably would behoove us, and I actually would ask John to weigh in on this, to maybe have somebody who's a third party take a look at the contract structure as a whole and just give us an opinion on what would be, because there's been some issue about whether it complies with state law or not. I'm not, you know, I'm not a professional lawyer, obviously, so, you know, I think there's two issues there. It's one, do we start the clock? And two, do we have somebody review and see if it's in compliance with state law? And does it need, does it need to be? So, anyway, anybody?
Ms. Cunningham, then Ms. Sellers.
Okay, so, I think, okay, here's my question. If we were to not renew the quote "three-year" contract, that would mean what? That after three years, it would be on an annual contract? Is that what we're saying?
It could be whatever you wished and whatever we agreed on.
Whatever?
Right now, what it is, is it's a contract that runs through June 30th of 2020. And if you take no action, as of January 1st, an additional year would be added, so it would run through June 30th of 2021. If you take action to not extend it, then it's a contract that would run through that date. And after that, it would be whatever-
Mutually agreeable, after that point in time.
Whatever was negotiated at that time.
Okay, so my question is, I'm not opposed to discussing that. My question would be, what do other people do? I find the three-year rolling thing very uncomfortable to me. I have all these years. I don't know of anybody in the world that, at the end of a year or maybe two at the most, that you don't discuss where we stand, how we're doing. But just for it to automatically renew seems to me a little bit weird, too. But again, I came on and that was the precedent. So now that we're raising the issue, my question is, I'm not opposed to stopping it then and talking about how we would go forward on both contracts. The question I would have is, what do people in like positions in other districts, what does their contract look like? And certainly, your number-two question to review it-
That's what it plays into what you're saying. I think that would probably be a good path to go. What's a more sensible structure for-
And in general response to your question,
Yes.
there are many different models. We did not invent this. This was modeled on other contracts within the state of Florida and elsewhere.
Sure.
So it is certainly a contract that is, a style of contract that is in use here and elsewhere.
Sure.
But there are any number of different styles. This one was, I believe it was essentially the contract, or the style of contract that was in place before I got here.
Right, that's what I'm-
And the board has revisited it from time to time through the years. And this one, I think, style of this one dates back to 2011 and thereabouts. But it is a contract that has been renegotiated with the board several times since I've been here.
Okay, well, I can't imagine it would hurt to relook at it, but that's one board member's opinion.
Ms. Sellers?
I spent some time, 'cause I figured this was coming up, so I talked with Mr. Murphy. It is legal, and his very conservative, I trust his opinion. He believes it is legal, it does not address severance pay. Therefore, it is a legal contract. I also talked with Carol and Mr. Bridges. And I understand their positions are very unique. They have seven political bosses, who, working for seven different bosses is very difficult. And they both have to deliver information and findings sometimes that people might not like. But the experience and knowledge that these two people have is very valuable. And sometimes, they have to tell us things that maybe we don't wanna hear, maybe will upset us. But, so they feel that they would like to keep these contracts. So we only have two options at this point. We can either non-renew their contracts or we can take some time to find other contracts that might be favorable to them. Because you can't just do away unilaterally with these contracts, because they have these contracts right now. You can't just say, "Well, we're going to a one-year." We have to either non-renew them or find other contracts. So the only thing I know that we can do short-term, because right now, they both would like to keep these contracts, and we haven't presented a comparable alternative to them that they might be willing to trade these contracts for. But, so the only thing I know that we can do at this point is either put it on an agenda and vote, take a vote to either continue or put it on there to non-renew, I guess, because they automatically continue. But my feeling is, I've been very pleased with the performance of both of these people. My feeling is, if we non-renew, it's sort of showing a no-confidence sort of issue. So it's just up to us. I am not against looking at other contracts that they might favorably be willing, because we would have to negotiate with them. But in these kinds of positions, I don't know that anybody, nobody is indispensable. Everybody at some point will be replaced. And to get this kind of knowledge and experience, I don't know that anybody will come here with us just offering a one-year contract. So I don't know, I'm not a contract expert. I don't know all the different kinds of contracts that are out there. But when you think, we've gone through looking for people. If you expect people to move and you're telling them, "Well, we'll give you a one-year contract and we can non-renew it just because we want to non-renew it," what kind of experience and knowledge are you gonna get? So those are the things we need to think. I believe we need to do research on this, because we don't want to do damage to our employees that have served us well. But those are the only two options I see right now, because they both, I believe, would like to keep their contracts. And they know that we have the option of non-renewing it.
Mr. Wilson?
So, if I understand correctly, we can't talk about those specific contracts at this time? Is that correct?
No, no, the evaluation.
Evaluations.
That is not public.
My concern has always been that there is no clause that allows for termination for convenience. That's my concern. And you might recall that Superintendent Bird agreed to have that placed in her contract. And I think when we went through the situation with Mrs. Leroy, that really was a saving grace for us, because that could've been very costly had that clause not been in there. So that's my concern. I would offer that the contracts, all the contracts, should have a clause that allows for termination for convenience. I think that by and large, addresses the state concern as well. Mr. Murphy, would you like to weigh in on that?
Certainly, yeah. And I wanted to clarify something that Board Member Sellers had said. While I view the contracts that you all have mentioned with both Ms. Matthews and Mr. Bridges as legal contracts, there are certain provisions of the law, and in particular, what Mr. Wilson was mentioning, 215.425, which, by the way, was passed after this contract was approved. There may be a benefit for the district, and we'll have to the school board to determine, to have a third party take a look at the contracts, to provide an interpretation. I feel very close to the issue. You know, I work with Wes on a day-to-day basis and with Ms. Matthews. And so it may be that you would wanna have someone that is an expert in public employment law, or a number of determiners that I can think of that would probably be willing to do that, if that was the board's decision. But I think in general, you have a contract that really expressly does not provide any kind of severance. It does not provide any ability for the board to terminate the contract for convenience. That seems very clear, in express terms of the contract. That was what was negotiated, and that is what it is. But as to whether or not an interpretation of that contract that might be done by either a court or an administrative judge, pending, that would only flow after some type of action by the board, which would probably be the nature of a termination or some type of potentially adversarial proceeding. And I think that's probably not the time or place for those kinds of things to be looked at and reviewed. So it may be that the board, if the board desires to do that, to have someone take a look at that. But in the absence of any specific findings, you have a contract, the contracts, the parties have negotiated the terms fairly. You know, I'm not aware of any bases for why either Ms. Matthews or Mr. Bridges would be terminated for cause. And, you know, as you indicated, you could desire to say we tend not to renew it come January 30th of 2020. But in the meantime, you know, you have a contract that moves forward with these employees. And as Mr. Bridges and Ms. Matthews understand, you know, contracts are the subject of discussions. The parties could agree on any number of different things if they choose to do so. And that may be an option moving forward, I don't know. That would be dependent on the parties, of course. But, I just wanted to clarify that the provision that Mr. Wilson was referring to was a limitation on the ability to have severance pay, which is defined in the statute as compensation post-termination. And they limit that to 20 weeks of salary. And that went into effect, I believe, July 1 of 2011. And that, the interpretation of that provision and how it may relate to the existing contracts, that would be what I would think I would want to have someone specifically look at to opine on whether or not, what the legal effect is, if any, as to the interplay between those provisions. Am I making myself clear?
Yes.
Ms. Cunningham?
Well, my comment was gonna be that, and I wanna get back to your point there, is this is not, I don't think, a personal thing. I think when we do HR moves, normally in any kind of corporation, you don't look at the people that are currently sitting in the seats. You try to set up a contractual situation for employees, both today and who may be in those positions in the future. So I think both of them do a fine job. You know, I personally sit on the audit committee. I've been appointed for several years now, and I've got no issues with Ms. Matthews. It's not about the person or persons sitting in the seat. It's about setting up contractual situations that, as we move forward, regardless who sits in those positions, that they're properly covered and so forth. And I do feel, as Mr. Wilson pointed out, that there does need to be a termination for clause. We were very grateful, as he indicated during the Ms. Leroy situation. So that would be one thing. And then, secondly, they are entitled, as anybody would be, to severance. So I feel like that should be covered as well. So if we were to do a no continuation, it would be with, for me, it would be with the caveat that we look at the contract, they've been done several years back, and see what's out there, have someone outside, third party, review the contract in the meantime, and try to work something up for perhaps when it comes up for renewal in 2020. But I think we have to start down that path, rather than just continually renewing, renewing, and renewing. So that's my point.
Yeah, I mean, I think the question, I agree with all of that. The question is how you get from here to there? And the question from here to there is, you just don't renew the contract. Nobody loses a job today.
No, no.
Nobody, the contract is still in place. We're just not padding a year on the back end of it. It's still a very good deal. You negotiated a very good deal. And it's gonna continue to be very, 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 very good. We can do the deep dive on it next year or the year after that. You know, I don't wanna be insinuateous. I've had some philosophical differences with Wes about how we view things. I have no issues at all with Carol, sorry. But, I mean, even Wes, it's just there are some philosophical issues that may, you know, who knows what the outcome of those are? But I'm not gonna be in a position to do anything about that, even if I want to, for three years. You know, it's, the, all we're doing is starting the clock so we can make better contracts. And there is the element of this, guys. All the teachers that DOE made us transfer, they didn't have three-year rolling deals. How are we gonna look them in the eye and tell, how are we gonna look Jackie in the eye? And tell them, "Well, Wes and Carol have a harder job than you do." With respect, I don't think you do. It doesn't make you bad people, that's not what I'm saying. But there is a sense of common purpose here. And, you know, I think we can invoke that by simply not renewing the automatic rollover and then studying the best way to make the best contract.
Ms. Wilson?
And I agree as well with those comments. I think that if a clause is added that an individual could be terminated for convenience, then the number of years of the contract becomes pretty much irrelevant. You can have it one, two, three, four, five. But again, in heaven's bid, I don't expect this to happen. But if something goes terribly wrong, as it currently stands, we're obligated to pay out the remainder of the three-year contract, as opposed to a certain amount of severance pay. And I think that's significant. So, again, from my perspective, it's a matter of adding that clause, which I think should be in everyone's contract.
Ms. Sellers?
There is termination for cause, right?
Termination for convenience is-
No, no, in the contract, there is termination for they're not doing their job if they get-
Substantial breach or just cause.
Yes, and just cause would include-
Any number of different bad things, potentially.
But if they weren't doing their job, if their evaluations were poor.
I think it's very, very, very hard, I'm sorry.
You know, I think the statute, there's some just cause provisions that if you wanna analogize to teacher contracts. There are certain things that constitute, per se, just cause. I don't wanna get into hypothetical or speculative type of advice, but I think it is safe to say that just cause could probably be a fairly significant proof.
You did not have cause for Kathleen Roy. That's your, you just didn't. She was terminated for convenience, not the cause.
Correct.
So, just-
Okay, so-
I'm in the motion.
So, Mr. Murphy, I wanna make sure, today, if we are in agreement that we want to make some modifications on the contract that is currently in place, tell us, would you let me ask him? Thank you. What we need, what is the next step?
Well, if the board is desirous of making changes to the contract, then you would need to talk with both Ms. Matthews and Mr. Bridges to see if they were equally as desirous of making changes. Contract goes both ways. Two parties, the school board is one party, and then in this case, Mr. Bridges and Ms. Matthews are the other parties. So if the parties come to a meeting of the mind, then you can amend the contract.
Okay, so say they are not in agreement. Then we would basically have to say today, by December, what's the date, by?
Today's November 14th.
Oh, what's the date, is it December 1st?
It's by the end of December, December 31st.
Okay, so we're gonna have to tell them by the end of December that we are not going to renew their contract?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I'm understanding, with the understanding that we would look at some other contracts, some other places, and get someone that you have, you will identify that can help us through the process?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm just wanting to make sure that I'm understanding and everybody else is as well.
Yes, and I think that, yes, that is correct.
Mr. Harris, we're talking about the contracts for Mr. Bridges and Ms. Matthews, and whether or not we need to let it roll for another year or if we need to not renew the contract and then do some investigations on what other alternatives might have and add the clause that's in Ms. Jackie's contract.
Not a new issue, I brought it up 11 years ago.
Okay, well, I'm just never gonna know where we are.
I want you to know, well, I want everyone to know that it's not a new one, and I appreciate you bringing it up, Speed.
You're welcome.
This has been on the table before.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so you said not renew. What we mean is, their contract would remain for the next three years. We would simply not renew at the end of '20. I just wanna be sure the audience and media doesn't say we're not renewing January 1. It would be effective-
Yeah, the contract will not automatically extend.
Will not automatically extend, okay. So what do we need to do to do that today? Or at the next board meeting?
They would need to come for the December board meeting, I would think. They would need to put on an agenda for the December.
Okay.
What meeting?
In that case, is it, can we get a sense of where people stand on that? I mean, I, or if we can adjust the timing. There's nothing legally preventing us from doing that tonight, right? Wes, I mean, if somebody moves it tonight, then-
We would have to go on the agenda as an emergency item.
Can we, sorry.
I don't perceive that it's an emergency. I think that we can have it on the agenda for December. I think it serves the same purpose. I think we need to agree on the meeting for December, since Mr. Townsend is saying he can't attend the meeting on the 12th. Ms. Sellers?
Oh, I was just gonna say, within a month, at least, somebody can be talking with the two employees officially about this before we do it tonight, without them even having the courtesy of having someone talk with them officially.
If we can get it scheduled on a meeting that I can attend and vote on, I have no problem with when we do it. That's what I care about.
Okay, so Mr. Townsend can't make the December 12th meeting. And so the option that would be, if we kept it on a Tuesday, would be December the 19th. Which would be, or we would have to look at another date, because Ms. Reynolds can't do it the first Tuesday in December.
Sunday.
And then we have to keep in mind that this is not just the board's work, it's the staff work as well. So we have to make sure that whatever we agree on is gonna be doable for the staff.
So, Mike Calley is open that entire week if somebody-
If the majority of us are here, we would have a forum, so.
True, people do miss.
So you don't wanna do it on December the 19th or you're gonna do it on December the 4th? Ms. Jackie, can you look at the calendar and see how that's gonna work?
I'll be gone that full first week in December.
I'm sorry, December the 5th.
Plan that around.
The 19th would be great for me, if we could do that. That would solve all my issues.
I'm open. Oh, I have to check with Sharon, so I can't do the 14th for the other thing.
I'm gonna do the 19th.
Would you say no? How about that Monday?
I'm open, just leaving it like it is.
How about the 11th? Does that work?
Y'all, we all have to miss board meetings sometimes. This is a highly unusual thing for us at this date to be changing a board meeting, because then the next person that comes up with missing a board meeting date may say, "Hey, board, I can't come."
We let Ms. Cunningham vote in a work session. She gave her opinion remotely. So I think there is some accommodation that can-
You could call in. You could call in.
Is that a legitimate thing?
We've done that before.
There's nothing in the statute that prohibits it.
Sure.
Yeah, we've done that before.
Can you?
I think we've allowed board members to participate back when-
But not vote, I don't think the law allows that.
Oh, yeah, sure it does.
I'm not aware of, I'm not aware of a prohibition, but I'll be happy to vote.
Okay, how many of us can do the 19th?
I'm looking.
Everybody can do the 19th?
They do.
Okay, so this, let's just do the 19th?
Great, that solves everything.
I think Jack said they have diversity election.
No, that is on, that is on, the regional- Diversity election is on the 5th.
Oh, I have to check with Sharon. Okay, I can do the 19th.
We'll move the meeting to December the 19th.
Okay.
And then we will add that to the agenda for the next board meeting. All right, what else do you have?
I just wanted to touch on this briefly. I wanted to just read a couple of things of fact from the most recent Rooney investigation. And this is, came from what the investigator said about Ms. Blanchard's professional development plan. "I reviewed a copy of Ms. Blanchard's professional development plan. The PDP was started by Mr. Looney on December 9, 2017. The form was not completed properly, i.e. no SMART or other measuring- i.e. no SMART or other measuring metrics to evaluate improvement. Furthermore, the assessment tool was never finalized. There were no signatures to indicate that Ms. Blanchard received a copy of the professional development plan, understand what was required of her, and at times certain to improve in the areas of deficiency. Mr. Looney was unable to provide an explanation as to why the PDP was not completed properly." That PDP is the sole meaningful documentation upon which her nonrenewal was based. So, I want that on the record for the public to know. Additionally, I want it on the record for the public to know that the investigation characterizes Mr. Looney as saying that the two thousand ten George G. Inkins investigation was completely unfounded. That is false. Now, it doesn't quote him, it paraphrases him. So, I don't know what he actually said. But if he said for real that it was completely unfounded, that's either a lie or it's false. The actual finding was not substantiated, which is a very different legal definition than unfounded. And I would hope our investigators could correct that in the record. But that's a false state statement either given to our investigators or mischaracterized by them. And the third thing, just there was some discussion a while back as to whether the meeting that Tim attended was in fact a mandatory meeting. It was. Looney called it, I believe it was August seventeenth. And a few days after that, Bradley Hardisty, who's the AP, sent a note to the staff that said this meeting is a mandatory meeting. I will happily show that to anyone. Those are things I just wanted on the record. This continues to be a giant problem, and it's not going away.
All right, does anybody else have anything? The only thing I want to talk about is the retreat. We had been given two dates that Dr. Freho and the superintendents and her staff would be available December the fourteenth and January the tenth. And we have all the one board member who can be available on the fourteenth of December, and I think everybody is available on January the tenth. So, because of that and the importance of all board members being present, we will have the retreat on January the tenth. And I think the time that Dr. Freho had suggested was from nine to four. So, just want to make sure everybody understands that and have that on their calendar. All right, if there's nothing else, we can review the agenda for today's board meeting. Ms. Cunningham, while you were out, we said that January the tenth is the date that everybody is available for the retreat.
Yes, ma'am, and I just checked with my staff. I cannot be here on November, on December nineteenth. Both of my people are out of town. So, I can do the twelfth but not the nineteenth. So, could we revisit that, go to a different day? I'm sorry, I had to check.
Okay, so, and go back, look at the calendar again?
So, yes, the tenth is fine for the board retreat. So, that is set then?
Where is that gonna be?
We're working on a location.
Okay.
So, we need to go back to the calendar for the board meeting for December.
For December, if you don't mind, please.
All right.
Literally, the only date that's bad for me is the twelfth, I think. I mean, I, there might be, there are two little things right together.
Would the eleventh work?
Actually, that may be the other date that's bad for me. Because it's like a two-day thing, just hold on.
Can we just do some type of poll? And then send an email to everybody soon? What's doable for everybody?
Actually, the eleventh's good for me. Yes, that's fine.
Should we do it for everybody? How many do we, so we can be done?
Everybody December the eleventh, in a second.
We just had a Florida coalition meeting, but we'll just have to, we'll have to miss that one. I think you go to that one, I won't be...
How many of us are not available on the twelfth?
I have something every day, so.
Excuse me?
How many of us are not available on the twelfth?
Just Mr....
I think it's Mr. Townsend.
That was the scheduled date.
While we were changing it.
How does the eleventh look? So, we can be, I'm sorry, we can be done?
It's the essential part of the coalition meeting. But I've got a board meeting that day and another event, I can be late.
Most late, ten?
No, it's...
That'd be a twelve thirty.
It'll be a twelve thirty.
Yeah, I won't be able to make the eleventh.
One or two, I can be here. I'll miss just some of the work session.
Okay, so what I'm recommending that you do is, I'm recommending that we look at the calendar and come up with some dates. And then, just like we did for the retreat, everybody respond back in a time and fashion, and hopefully, we can all agree on one date. And that needs to be within the next few days.
Yeah, it does.
So that we can get notice and all of that, yes.
Or alternatively, we could just agree to vote on the contract tonight. And...
I'm not ready to vote on a contract tonight. I think, I agree with Miss Sellers. When we came today, Mr. Bridges and Ms. Matthews had any intentions of us voting on anything today. And I think this had a courtesy to them.
Three years out.
I asked about this at the last work session. I asked, when are we doing this? We said we'll talk about, I thought their statement was we'll talk about it next work session.
We didn't say we were gonna put it on the agenda for a vote. We said we would talk about it. We've been waiting until everybody got their evaluations.
I'll just offer the motion tonight, and y'all can shut me down if you want. Or we can just do it and get it over with.
Ms. Cunningham, Mr. Harris?
It seems logical to assume that before a vote would be held, that there would be some negotiations with the parties from which these contracts would be imposed upon. There might be something else in the works if they had conversation rather than just one-sided vote on our part. So, I would think it would be at least reasonable to have conversation with both of them before we take a vote as a body.
Today's the fourteenth. We have ample enough time to get a date that everybody can hopefully agree on and present this at the December meeting, in my opinion. Miss Sellers, do you have...
I was just, has anybody can, can, would you be able to call in on the twelfth if they find out you can vote?
You can. Because I've done that.
I thought you did.
I was out of state and...
I should be able to.
Abdu, that's how long ago.
It'd be, what, it'd be like six, six o'clock in the evening, probably, right?
Something like that, yeah.
Because I'm looking at my calendar and...
Yeah, and she's gone a whole week, the week before.
Yeah.
So... I'll help you, it's easy.
Because I thought you did that, Ms. Cunningham.
I did. It's a pain, but...
Couldn't you just call in?
That's what there was to do, yeah.
You just need to be there at the beginning of the meeting to say that you're there, and then you wait till that vote, and then you can hang up. That's what I did.
So, if Mr. Bridges and Mr. Murphy can confirm that he can vote, I think that's the bottom line?
I have concerns about whether that could be done, but I don't...
What?
But I will, with Mr. Bridges, look into that issue. But I'm not certain that in the absence of an emergency of some kind that a board member could participate via phone on a matter of voting. The issue that Lori participated in was simply giving her opinion at a workshop meeting.
No, sir.
I mean, just recently.
That's recently, but years ago, I was out of state, and there was a vote, votes being taken that night. And I called in, abdu, put me through into the, live in the boardroom. And I was able to listen to the whole meeting. And then, when the time was right, I was able to vote throughout the meeting. I can't tell you the date.
Those kinds of situations are fact-specific. Often, they have to evaluate the facts of why the board member is not present or cannot be present.
So, I will, tonight, I would offer a motion to put it on the agenda tonight at the meeting. You guys can vote it down if you want, and we'll go from there. And then, if that gets voted down, we'll move on from there.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
May I comment? I, again, I'm struggling with this from the perspective of somehow this being personal. As a board, we have no, currently, we have no control over two contracts as a board. And all, what I'm suggesting, and I agree with Mr. Council on this, that all we're saying is, we're gonna stop that role so that we can negotiate a contract that is consistent with our other employees. And it's not a personal issue, it's just, it's a positional issue and a contractual issue. So, it's not terminating the contract in any way, shape, or form. It's just not rolling it so that we can negotiate. As it stands, we have, we have, there is no negotiation. It's not gonna happen. There's nothing to negotiate, it just rolls. So, that's my concern.
And I think that, Mr. Wilson, everybody is in agreement with your concern. I think it's just, is it an emergency matter to vote on it tonight? Or can we wait and vote on it in December? I think that's the issue. But I don't think anybody here is saying that what you said was not warranted, that it doesn't make sense. Miss Sellers?
I just have to agree that I spoke to them on, just for me, because I didn't know of anybody else. I just think these are long-term, experienced, knowledgeable, valuable employees that somebody officially should try to negotiate or talk with in an official capacity such as the board nominate someone to go...
The chair would be our representative.
A representative to go talk with them. And without doing it in this manner, I think this is highly disrespectful of our employees to make this change without first speaking to them. Well, I get that we're saying it's not personal. But when they were hired, both of these people probably could make much more money in the private sector than we pay them. So, part of their coming aboard us was with the contracts negotiated. I just think they deserve the right to have someone discuss this with them and maybe even see some options before we take the vote. If we want to take the vote tonight, that's fine. My concern is how we treat our employees. And because they're unique in that they answer directly to the board, not through the superintendent. And we're not giving, once again, we're not, no one is sitting down with them in official capacity representing the board to discuss this with them before we do this. And most of the time, when you nonrenew a contract, I don't care how long it is, that makes an employee feel there's a vote of no confidence. I know we're saying that, no, that's not what it means. But I think we owe them time to sit down with them and discuss. And perhaps they negotiate something before the December meeting. We have a month. And I remember Ms. Cunningham calling in and voting, so I don't know how that happened. And I would certainly hope that that could happen in December. It's totally legal.
So, we'll get an answer about whether or not Mr. Townsend can vote on the twelfth? And then, if that is known, then we need to look at another date? Yes?
I think that what Ms. Sellers is saying is absolutely accurate in terms of employee morale and in fairness. But I also believe what Mr. Wilson said is also true. We don't know, I mean, on this board, totally agree with what I proposed eleven years ago and what he's proposing that did not have that clause. So, to say that it's, you know, that we ought to move forward without including the two of them in the conversation, I think is unfair. But also, it doesn't signal that this board is against changing the contract either.
All right.
Sarah Beth, may I ask, where are you on this?
I mean, if the board moves to vote tonight, I will vote in favor of nonrenewal tonight. But I do think that we need to engage in negotiations with them before we nonrenew it. I would much rather find an answer before we take a step of, I don't know, it just, it seems disrespectful to not negotiate before we vote on their contract.
But if we leave the meeting, if we leave the meeting tonight without, if I'm somehow incapacitated and unable to vote on it, and we don't have a meeting set, then, you know, we could end up with a three, 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 three kind of vote. So, I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion tonight not to be disrespectful just because I know what my schedule is. And I think ultimately, the issue is what matters. And we had this exact conversation a year ago today. It's not like, this didn't sneak up on anybody. I asked, like, I mean, I think I've asked two or three different times this year, hey, when are we gonna talk about that? When are we gonna talk about that? I mean, it's, I mean, is anybody surprised that we're having this discussion?
I mean, I was under the impression it was, we were talking about it in work session day to vote at the December meeting was what I got when we left, so that's...
That was not my understanding. My understanding is that we would have discussion today once we gave everybody copies of their evaluations. It goes hand in hand. Evaluation goes hand in hand to me with the contract. And maybe, maybe my, my sense of going hand in hand is not, is in tune with everybody else. It was never, ever my understanding that we were supposed to put this on the agenda to vote on it, until we had discussion like we're having today. But you don't have, in my opinion, you don't have discussion in a work session, and you have a vote the same day. That's not the way we usually operate. We have discussion in the work session, and then we come back at the next board meeting if it's a consensus of the board, and we vote on it. And that's what we're doing today. Yes?
I just want to clarify, I think that's what I was saying was that...
That's what she said.
When he asked last week, he said we would be discussing it today, which I took to mean we would discuss it today. And then, if we were taking action, we would take action in December, so...
Yeah, you guys can vote against it tonight if you want. I can't take the chance of, I mean, this has nothing to do with respect. It has to do with whether I'm able to take the vote physically. And that's, you know, I'm not gonna be leaving the... I'm not going to give up the chance to take a vote on this. I feel, you know, you guys can maneuver things around, and we can get the date set up. If I didn't have to be in Tampa all day on that day, we wouldn't be having this discussion, it'd be fine. But the dynamics on this are fairly close, and I'm just not gonna give that chance up. So, if you don't want to add it to the agenda tonight, that's fine. But let's vote on it.
I don't see why we don't just take a minute and figure out a date that everybody can be here. We've already ruled out the first week. We've ruled out the twelfth for some. What about the eleventh, thirteenth? Can we talk about that and try to find, are you...
I can do any day but the twelfth and thirteenth, thirteenth.
You can't do the thirteenth.
Any day in December except the twelfth and thirteenth, thirteenth.
And, you know, I understand what you're saying, Lori, but it's three twenty.
Okay.
And we haven't even started looking at the agenda. We haven't even done the work session yet. And we still are struggling, just trying to agree on a date. And that's my thing. I think all of us want to be able to come to an agreement that we can come with one date, that everybody can come to the meeting. I don't think anybody is trying to shut anybody out of coming to the meeting. Because if that's the case, we just say stay with the twelfth. And then, Mr. Townsend can't come, then, you know, tough luck. But that's not what we're saying.
I understand, yeah.
We're trying to work it where everybody can come to the meeting. So, now, December the eleventh has been tossed. Is that a good day for everybody?
I'm willing to come late to the work session.
Which will be here for the, part of the work session and the board meeting, most important part, okay.
Normally, the coalition meeting's ended at eleven, so we should be back by...
Can we do a two o'clock?
You could miss, right?
All right, so we'll go with December the eleventh.
Perfect, get it done. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
All right now, going to the agenda for today's meeting. We have two, uh, special recognitions, I'm not aware of any speakers. We have two sets of minutes. And is the order of the agenda still the same? What we're doing the reorganization on the front end?
This is a 10 plus, and you can't move the-
You can't, you can't change it.
So, that's why we wanted to let you know, we would like to have the reorganization at the end if possible. I just can't move it on the 10th.
Miss Farnes, a reorganization of the board will come-
When?
After the regular, after the public hearing?
Just before the superintendent's conference.
So, after the public hearing?
Can we get a hard copy of that? Or is that what you're saying, you can't do?
I can't, yeah. It's a 10 plus.
This, this is a template.
Yeah.
All right. So then, uh, after we do the minutes, we'll go to the consent agenda and new administrators. And items C-15 through C-17, am I having, Mr. Harris?
I'm, uh, looking at C-15, the count receivable write-off for 12, 13, for Ridge and Travis. This is just very troubling to me that we have monies that aren't collected. I want to be reassured that in a charge-off, we are going to turn these over to a collections agency and going forward, not enroll unless you are paid. I thought, I think that the message that we send might be by some people received as, well, I don't have to worry about it. And when you're writing off $42,000 and most of it comes from Ridge, $27,000, $28,000 plus of that is coming out of Ridge, I'm really concerned that there's not enough management and enforcement of collecting the fees that are due. And since those two schools have to operate on their own income, it really is concerning that we are being asked to charge this off. And I just wanna make sure that we know that these monies are being chased, if you will.
Um, Ms. Reynolds?
Just to comment on that, I would imagine that, or I would be interested to know what percentage of that is because of financial aid, because financial aid doesn't hit until two to three weeks into the semester. I know it's a major problem at other colleges and universities where you don't, none of that money hits until basically the third or fourth week of school. So, to have students not enrolling until they can pay, I think would probably run into some issues with that, would be my assumption.
Mr. Wilson?
Well, I would agree with Mr. Harris. Uh, I guess I'm concerned that there isn't a collection agency, maybe there is. Is there, is there a collection agency that the district works with?
I, I can certainly address the issue. There is a collection agency, what was occurring, uh, these, these are from years ago. And traditionally, these write-offs have been five years in arrears. So, they go through a five-year, four-year to five-year period before they come before you write 'em off. Uh, what occurred with this particular year, uh, is what we're looking at from several years ago. And when we, at least when I was made aware of these write-offs this year, uh, we implemented a policy that has indeed taken to a collection agency. But prior to this year, there had not been a collection agency involved.
Are we still giving students credentials?
Yes, sir.
Even though they are? Can that be with-
As of right now, we are no longer doing that. We have put a plan in place and I can get that information to the board pertaining to the exact plan. Uh, that involves a 30-day delinquency, a 60-day, a 90-day, and then withholding the credentials so that they don't get it as it's turned over to a collection agency. That is a new policy that is, that's, that's been a new procedure that we've put into place in working with those technologists this year.
I'm surprised it isn't an audit criticism.
I hope that the current leadership there is going to rectify that. I know they weren't in place with that year. And hopefully, they will rectify that because they do live and die on their own income.
Yes, sir.
I would like to just add too that I spoke to the business coordinator about this and these do go way back. And he went out and met with the staff at the, at the centers and determined what is considered unpaid and what is considered not legitimate receivables. So, he broke that down in that attachment. And he has unpaid and then he had another figure for students that never entered. And so, the receivables weren't, you know, correctly on the books. They shouldn't have been on the books.
There are some inconsistencies because there were students who enrolled in school and they withdrew. And the, the errors that were made back then did not compensate for the fact that they withdrew. So, it was still showing as if that money was owed, yet indeed, those students never came to school for the program. And it should have been, uh, an item that should have pulled it off back then.
Oh, that's what I was going to question, it looked like, it cuts it off, but it looks like there was almost $20,000 dollars on here, um, from students that did not enter. And I was gonna question, why is it even on here if they didn't come? How do you collect money if they didn't show up?
Mrs. Townsend?
Uh, and, and this is just a, a comment and hopefully, something that can be addressed in the, the future. But while we're talking about this, there's a fairly widespread perception that Ridge and Travis have at times been used as something of a piggy bank for other district-wide stuff. Whether particularly mar, marketing stuff, like, I noticed the radio show used to be sponsored by Ridge and, and, and Travis. Uh, I think, I don't know the details of that and I, I would like to have some look at any money that was generated by Ridge and Travis that didn't go to Ridge and Travis programs. I would, I would, I would wanna have a look at that. I, I don't, that's not something I'm gonna solve here, but since we're talking about their funding and they are very important and self-funded, I, I, I'd like to see an accounting of that or, or, or maybe some presentation on that in the fut, the future.
Business services contract, C-17. Donations, C-18 through six, C-38. Actually, uh, C-41. C-42. C-43. Human resources, C-44 through C-46. C-47, 48. And go on to the regular agenda, R-49. R-50. 51, 52. And then we go into reconvening the impasse hearing. And then after that, we have the reorganization. And then the superintendent's report. And I'm not aware of any report from Mr. Bridges or from, uh, Ms. Mathis. And then we have what members report. All right, Ms. Jackie, yours.
Okay. Um, we're gonna start off with the, um, ASME 2016, 2017 contract. Ms. Cordes is gonna come forward.
Well, that wasn't a warm reception. Hello.
Good afternoon.
How are you all?
Good.
I'm good. To briefly discuss with you the, um, ASME collective bargaining issues. So, we are pleased to announce that we have, um, settled the ASME negotiations. Uh, they were ratified on November 4th. Uh, it was an overwhelming ratification according to Larry. So, um, essentially, we agreed to a one and a half percent wage increase for bus drivers, bus attendants, for custodial maintenance, vehicle services, and as well as food service, school nutrition assistance and, uh, food service. Um, essentially, they did agree to remove the health insurance plan benefits. Uh, I'm sorry, they agreed to remove the health insurance, um, plan, the language and the summary of benefits. We did agree that there will be no benefit plan design or premium changes to the Polk County Public School Health Plan for the 2018 school year. We also agreed to add two days of bereavement leave. Um, so, in addition to the sick leave that they get when they are out for a death of an immediate family member, they also get an additional two of bereavement leave days. I'm sorry.
Is that on top of the three that you normally get?
Correct, and it's just for ASME.
Okay, just asking.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Uh, in addition, the employees that have a crop, uh, I'm sorry, exhausted their accrued sick leave, they may use accrued vacation leave without providing advance notice, um, for sick, when they're out on sick. So, it's a vacation in lieu of sick as well. Any questions about that? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and she's sitting there because she's gonna move forward with, um, the 2018, 19, the school calendars.
Yay.
So, on October 25th, the superintendent's calendar committee met. We did discuss 2018 and 2019 calendars. So, um, I'll just walk through it. Essentially, there are no unpaid training or workdays that are scheduled before August 6th, 2018. I'm sorry, this is for the 18, 19 calendar, okay? So, for the 18, 19 calendar, there are no unpaid training workdays scheduled before August 6th. Uh, this calendar provides for six, six teacher workdays, those are August 8th, August 9th, August 10th, October 15th, January 4th, and, uh, May 31st. Also, the calendar provides for four staff development days, October, I'm sorry, August 6th and August 7th, September 17th and February 15th. So, the first day for students in 2018 is October 13th, I'm sorry, I keep reading, I keep saying October, I apologize. August 13th, uh, the interim, first interim report is distributed during the week of September 10th through the 14th. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, so, just, you're talking really fast and I'm trying to follow.
Oh, I know that.
And I've looked at it, just to be clear. So, teachers return, that's the big question out there, that's why I've been driving Ms. Jackie crazy. Teachers would return on August 6th of 18 and students would return on August 13th of 18.
Correct.
Period?
Yes.
Okay.
Period.
And then everything else are the teacher work, right, okay, and staff development and all the rest of that?
Right.
Okay. And, and school, you're gonna get to school ending, right? Here we go. I have it as, go ahead.
Okay. Any other questions before I do? Uh, so, FTE week is October 8th through the 12th. Report cards are distributed October 29th. A Thanksgiving break is the week of November 13th through the 23rd.
And we're continuing to provide a week in both calendars, is that correct? With the, with the-
The caveat.
The caveat that should be storm day makeup, it would be used during that time, okay, all right.
The next bullet says the three storm makeup days are November 19th, November 20th, and February 15th. Okay, the second interim report is distributed the week of November 12th through the 16th. The last day before winter holidays is Friday, December 21st. End of the first semester is Friday, December 21st as well. Students and paras return from winter holidays on January 7th. The report cards are distributed January 18th. FTE week is February 4th through the 8th. The third interim report card, I'm sorry, the third interim reports are distributed February 11th through the 15th. Spring break is March 25th through the 29th. This year, Good Friday is included in that spring break holiday. Report cards will be distributed on Friday, February, I'm sorry, Friday, April 5th. The fourth interim reports are distributed the week of April 29th through May 3rd. Graduations are May 13th through the 24th. The last day for students is Thursday, May 30th. And the last day for teachers is Friday, May 31st. There are six paid teacher holidays as provided by the CBA. September 3rd, November 22nd and 23rd, December 25th, January 21st, and February 18th. This, there are also four paid para holidays. Sep, September 3rd, November 22nd and 23rd, and February 18th. Any questions on the 18, 19?
Ms. Reynolds and then, Mr. Townsend?
I have a concern, and this actually goes for both of them. I know this year, we're getting out that Thurs, the last day for students is the Thursday before Memorial Day. The last day for teachers is that Friday. Both of these calendars have us going Tuesday through Thursday after Memorial Day, which I realize we have to hit so many days, but it just seems, I know from a student's point of view, it's pointless. Um, from a teacher's point of view, nothing's going to happen on those three days because it's, they're already on vacation, graduations have all already happened if they're over the 24th. I don't know what the solution would be to it, if it would be possible to do three days at the beginning where we're going back on a Thursday instead. I just know those three days after, I mean, that was the biggest complaint last full year was that having those three days at the end of the year where kids weren't there and there wasn't anything productive able to happen in those three days. So, I don't know what the answer is to that, but I am concerned about going back after Memorial Day, at least for only three days.
We looked at it in the calendar committee this year. Uh, students can't return any sooner than August 10th. Uh, as a result, they are starting on the 13th. Because of where the 13 falls, this year, we can't push it back anymore, move it up anymore to allow the teachers to get out anymore. So, unfortunately, it's just the way the calendar falls this year. And, or, sorry, for 18, 19, and then for 19, 20, correct.
Mr. Townsend, I think I saw Mr. Harris afterwards.
Do I read this correctly that we are done with the dreaded early release days?
Yes.
No, they're, they're at the bottom.
So, on the actual calendar, 18, 19, so one cheater, um, there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven early release days. Those are Wednesday, September 12th, Wednesday, October 3rd, November 7th, January 16th, February 6th, March 13th, and April 24th.
Can we make it a priority for next year to work with PEA to eliminate them somehow? I, I, I don't, I'm not blaming anybody, I'm not, I'm just figuring some way out to come up with some alternative than dropping a-
Yeah.
I mean, it affects-
Everybody hates it.
It affects attendance, it's difficult for people. I, I'm not, I'm not criticizing, I'm saying, can we work really hard to try to eliminate them? And if we can't, we can't.
Now would be the time to do it before we-
What's that?
Now would be the time to do it before we-
Well, if, 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 if we could do it now, I mean, I mean, if it's, but it's probably gonna take, it's, 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 it's a bargain thing, I think.
It's a bargain thing, right.
Yeah, it's a bargain committee.
Right, so.
And I would have to second that, and I've, and I've heard it for years and mentioned it for years, that it's a waste. Teachers can't do a whole lot in that extra hour and they don't. And kids and parents trying to get transportation, it's a frickin' nightmare, is all I'm gonna say. So, I mean, I would love that, but Mary Ann fought really hard to get them in there and felt they were extremely needed. In this case, this year, they came in handy because of the storm and Irma and all of that. But I, I would have to agree, if there's any way when we negotiate the next round, that that be looked at very seriously.
And I will third that.
We can definitely look at it.
We need to look at it.
Mr. Harris, you have the floor?
I'm not saying I'm in favor, nor am I saying I'm against. But as a teacher, I wasn't crazy about them. But personally, uh, but institutionally, these early release days were created on purpose because-
because of a pushback of the alternative. The alternative being full day in-service for teachers. And this was a compromised position. So just throw that out there for digestion. The other item that was brought up in terms of the calendar, we had a former superintendent who came up with a solution to eliminate the people's, students and teachers and parents' idea that the last three days of a semester are a waste. While that superintendent was principal, the last three days of the semester were final exams. Across the board, everyone gave a final exam, no conversation. Those conver, those final exams were counted. They were part of your grade. So therefore, you'd best take them seriously. That's the way you eliminate kids and teachers and parents thinking those last three days are a waste of time.
Well, I, my comment on that was just that graduation's ending on the twenty-fourth, so all of your seniors are already gone, which at the high school level affects, I mean, there's a senior in, I would say, eighty, seventy-five to eighty percent of your classes.
Their, their finals were, their last three days, everyone else's finals were their last three days. So you didn't have any sloughing off because you had two finals a day, plus you had your lunch period, whatever that was. And believe me, it made a difference. And student behavior and student retention host the last three days. I've worked under both arrangements, no final exams and having finals the last three days. It did make a difference.
Brought joy to students everywhere.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, that is one way to create urgency of those last three days meaning, being meaningful.
Ms. Fields? Well, I wanted to commend the calendar committee for starting school on a Monday instead of Thursday. So thank God for that. And I also wanted to find out for the, for the Christmas break, are there extra days being proposed here? Because I think for this year, we go back, we come back on the third. So there must be some extra days where we don't come back mid-week, we come back the following week. So I guess the question is, are there extra days?
I don't think so.
You don't think so, okay. And then the last thing is, I agree about the early release days. If we can do away with those days, that'd be nice. Okay, I think Ms. Portis can also still have a conversation regarding the early release days with the calendar committee, even after, we can look at those days. Okay, are there any other questions?
Nineteen, twenty, do I need to go through that, or are we clear?
We can read it.
We can read it, it's okay.
Okay. Items five and six are informational items that were sent, that were brought in. I don't think we had any questions that we had brought before us, Mr. Wilson?
Just a comment about the PEA's audit. You know, there was a time when they consistently had numerous findings and, and their report was not a clean report. And, and so I just wanna congratulate them on a very nice, very clean audit report.
PEA?
PEA.
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 PE, did I say PEA?
Yes.
Well, that's good too, I mean, you know, it's good, they're one of those.
Can't blame them for everything.
I meant PEA.
Thank you. Any other item, any other questions? That concludes our work session. We have no parents at this time. If you would like, I can push it to four fifteen, if you'd like, or you wanna, you still set for four o'clock?
Yeah, you can make it later. Give us a chance.
Four fifteen, okay, four fifteen for discipline. That concludes our work session.